Okay, we'll call to order this October, the 26, 2016 meeting of the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Waymire?
Present.
Vice Chair Renaud?
Present.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Harris? Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you'll all stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Pastor Leonard Chesbrough at the New Life in Christ Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Heavenly Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to gather together today, Lord. And Lord God, the freedoms we have in our country, Lord, where we can have meetings. And Lord God, I pray your blessings upon each one here today. We ask that, Lord, that you'd guide and direct this meeting, Lord God, and we thank you for everything, in Jesus's name, amen. Okay, it takes us to Correspondence and Organizational Business. Derek?
Yeah, before we get into the items on the agenda there, a couple of updates. We have issued the RFPs for the mold remediation at the courthouse, so we're looking to receive bids for those, and then also, we continue to receive applications for the administrator positions. So as those continue to come in, we will disseminate them to you all, and we're still refining the process for getting those interviews buttoned down, so. And that's all I have.
Okay. My agenda is showing the three items under Correspondence and Organizational Business on the donations. You want me to do that?
Well, if you want to run through them, yeah.
Okay. The first item would be, consider approving a donation to the VFW Post 5901 and General Edward Hand Chapter Dar for a Reefs Across America campaign.
First off, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to be here today. My name is Don Markanet. I'm the commander of the Ottawa VFW Post 5901. A few months back, we got together with the Daughters of the American Revolution and came up with a program that derived off of Reefs Across America, which that program was to put a wreath on every veteran's headstone in the military cemeteries. When they first started out, a few years after they started, they got up to 100,000 wreaths. Last year, it was over 700,000 wreaths. And these are throughout the cemeteries, the military cemeteries throughout the country and outside of the country. So anyway, what we decided was sitting, talking, and we put flags out on Memorial Day to all the veterans' cemeteries throughout Franklin County. And we kind of figured it would be nice to do the same thing during the holidays and honor these veterans during the Christmas holidays. And so this is a wreath that we've kind of came up with. It's a 20-inch wreath with a bow on it, and it'll look similar to the ones that are at the military cemeteries. Basically, what this does is it honors those that served this country. It also remembers our fallen veterans, those that have died overseas, as well as in this country. It also teaches the children the value of freedom today. And so the donations, what we started, when we originally started out, we wanted to do Just Hope Cemetery, because we figured it was a big project to do 2,800 wreaths across Franklin County. There's about 400 veterans that are laid to rest at Hope Cemetery. So the program went over so well that we now have ordered another 400. And possibly by the, hopefully by Christmas time, we'll have enough not only to do Hope Cemetery, but to do Highland Cemetery as well. And then we'll expand into every county, every small little community cemetery, and we'll be able to put these out. The way we're putting them out, I went to the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, 4-H Clubs, and got their involvement in it. And what this does, it allows us to teach these kids, these young people, some of the things about our freedom and what it takes. Also something about the veterans and what the veterans are, honor them, respect them. And Veterans Day, you'll see, and you're seeing these all over town right now. We've got jars, donation jars up. City of Ottawa has sponsored, they've donated a check for $750. We've got Walmart is a sponsor, Price Shopper, Martin Marietta is a sponsor, and we've got a lot of little small businesses in Ottawa, as well as individuals. And when we first started out, the wreaths were selling for $10 apiece, and we're well over $4,000 in donations right now at this time. Of course, it's going to take a lot more donations, and the jars are helping us out. Casey Corporation, General Stewart, they've also became a sponsor. So basically, we're asking for the county to also help us out and become a sponsor of this program. My name is Don Markanet. Like I said, I'm the commander. The van over on the left, that's my senior vice, Dale Nadler, and then we've got the commander for the American Legion out of Wellsville that's also helping us work on these programs. We've got the Daughters of the American Revolution is also helping in on this. The Vietnam Veterans of America is also helping. Veterans Corner, like I said, the American Legion, and we've got almost every veterans' group, including the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts of America are also getting involved. So I'd just like to ask for you guys to help us out a little bit and stand behind us and help sponsor us. Thank you.
Chair Howard, I'd just like to let you know that the clerk's office is also trying to help them out as much as we can by helping them get grave markers that haven't been, either haven't been placed or are just so old that they're just deteriorating. So I do have a box of those to give to them, too, so whatever we can do. So that is another donation the county is already giving.
At Hope Cemetery, there are quite a few flag markers that have been destroyed, damaged, whatever, and the years have worn them pretty bad. So basically what I do, I put out this week, I put out one for June Butler, and she came up to me and she said her great uncle had fought in the Union Army. And after he got out of the Union Army, he went and joined the Confederacy. And he had passed away, and she asked me if I had a Confederate flag holder, which I did. So we went out this week and put a Confederate flag holder on her great uncle's. But also in the Hope Cemetery, on that tour, I went to the tour and I saw a lot of Civil War veterans, that their flag holders were broke, some of the tops were gone, some of them were bent, some were just plain rusted out and beat up pretty bad. So I did go to the county and asked them for help, and they've been great as far as getting me flag holders that I can go out and put out. Williamsburg had probably 20 flag holders last year that were completely destroyed and torn up and just disappeared. And so they gave me the names, and that's one of those cemeteries we're hitting, but there are a lot of cemeteries that, they're not marked as veterans, but we found out they were veterans. I've had people call me up and they'd say, "Well, no one's putting a flag on my husband's headstone." And I said, "Well, it's not marked as a veteran." And she'd call me up and she'd bring me in the DD 214 or whatever, and we'd go out and put a flag holder out. And we do this as a courtesy. There's no, nobody gets profit or gain from this. This is all donated. Our time is donated and everything is donated by people or whatever, but that's how we do our stuff.
We want to commend you on your organization on taking this project on, and I know we would all up here want to see every veteran in Franklin County have a wreath on their gravit. Whether we can get it done this year or not, I don't know, but it would be a deal. How much would you guess your headstone things are, price-wise, are we talking there?
Well, kind of the base price for them, they started, I get them from a foundry that just does them direct for me, so I pay significantly less than what they have to pay when they get them. I pay about $20 each. I'd say I probably have a box of 15 or 20 sitting in my office, ready to give to Mr. Markanet, so.
Well, we're just kicking around trying to get an amount here on a donation if we have that approved. Anybody got any suggestions?
Those wreaths will last several years, won't they? The wreaths are artificial, so they can last for the one year.
Right. We take them up, and we pot, we store them, and then they go back out. And of course, the wreaths, you know, years or whatever, you never know how much damage it'll do so that I'll be replaced. Bow's will probably have to be replaced every year, but that's something we've taken in consideration. This program is not going to be just a year long. It's going to be going on for quite a while. Hopefully, it'll go from generation to generation.
Are you more interested in the donation for the wreath program and not the flag holders, is that?
Either way, it's fine. Either way, it's fine. They both need done, so whichever you guys desire, that's fine.
Well, open for some suggestions. My thought was with your donation and if we would go in at somewhere around 500, we'd put as close to matching the city on their donation anyway for this year. If someone else has some thoughts, I'm open to the, whatever.
I was thinking, commensurate with the others that are in front of us, but...
Do what?
I was thinking, close to what the others that are in front of us, but...
The 200.
The 200.
I believe the city donated $750, I believe, and you might be...
City held it, yes.
And if we're, you know, if Janet's pricing those at 20 apiece and thinks there's 15 or 20, that's $300 to $400 we're in right there, so, you know, that, just use that for your math, I suppose. Call it 350 and then, you know, do whatever you want, but those are the numbers for you, so.
I think we ought to match what the city gives, please. 750. And Janet, you'd be getting those anyway, wouldn't you, those?
We, if requested, if a veteran dies and it's requested from us, then we do give one grave marker for each veteran upon seeing their military paperwork. We try not to do replacements, but, you know, they're just different materials being used now that, you know, that's pretty durable, and they used to not request, you know, a specific way for those to be put into the ground. So before I give one now, I make specific requests on how they're put in the ground or how they're put in on the stone so that they hopefully will last longer and stuff. So, you know, Mr. Markanet had told me that some of these people just don't have them, they never have had them, so some of those, you know, would have been an expense to us that we never incurred, and some of them are just damaged beyond, you know, recognition, so they need a new one. So, and most of the ones that Mr. Markanet and I have been working on are ones that I have just leftovers, that we just don't have, you can't die twice, and we, they're older wars, so those are mainly the ones I have, although there are a fair amount of general ones, because, you know, some people weren't serving in a war, so they'll just get a general marker that lists all the branches of the service.
Something on this today?
Sure. Would, I mean, I make a motion. Janet, are you replacing these like every year? You're ordering so many of them, or how often do you go through those, basically?
We just have a stock of them, and like I said, a lot of them that I'm gonna, that I have in a box to give to Mr. Markanet are ones that just, all the people are gone now and they're not needed anymore. So, you know, the older, older wars, you know, World War I, you know, obviously all those people are gone, so he needed some of those, so I think I saved back one or two of those, but other than that, I just gave him everything I had, which he needed that many. Like, he provided me a list of ones he actually needs right now to replace, so I'm not going to deplete my supply, but I'm doing what I can to get him the ones he needs.
Well, I think obviously those are county funds that are coming through the clerk's office and her budget, and I commend, commend that. I think that's great that we work with them and do what you can to do that and get the best price. Considering that, as an in-kind or however you want to look at that type of donation as well, I would kind of curve at your 500, you know, and go that route and make sure that our clerk has got funds to make sure that she can get the flag holders.
I think that would put us in the area of being along, close to what the city's donating at this time, and, you know, we'd love to give more, but one issue we have, we have a lot of different organizations coming to us for donations, and we've got to try to be halfway fair about, you know, we can't give a lot to one and then hardly anything to somebody else, so it makes it a little tougher to try to stay fair, but is that a motion for $500?
I'll make a motion that we donate $500 to the wreath program and commend them that they're involved in the youth, too, that they are getting some education on that for the program.
Second. I have a motion, a second, for a $500 donation.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, second item, be considered proving a request from USD 287 to contribute $200 towards the 2016 Veterans Day celebration. Chris, you want to come up?
Good morning. How are you this morning? I am Chris Robertson. I'm the West Franklin Elementary School principal at Appenous, and I just wanted to share with you this morning that West Franklin Elementary Schools, which includes Appenous and Williamsburg, we are hosting a Veterans Day celebration in honor of our veterans, and we think it's very important that our students realize how important freedom is and what our service members provide for us. So we are hosting a Veterans Day program on November 11th. At 9:30, we will have patriotic songs and readings and a little play, and then we would like to invite all the veterans from Franklin County to a dinner hosted at our school. So we are here today to see if the commissioners would be willing to sponsor $200 towards our activities that day.
Okay. We've done this in the past with Williamsburg, and I did talk to the principal of Williamsburg, and he advised that you were going to be rotating that, and this year it'll be Appenous, so it'll just be one dinner for the district, correct?
Correct, yes.
Do you, we talked about, Derek and I talked about this, at one time, we talked about whether we was going to do these with motions or the administrator just be authorized to do these, but...
And I'm fine with that. I think that's within the jurisdiction of our, I think. But what I do appreciate, though, is getting the information from these organizations that says, this is what we are going to do with it. And certainly, I think that that's within their call to make that decision.
Yeah, we can talk about that later, how, and get it set up, how we're going to do this. I mean, it's not going to hurt us. We can go ahead and, and I would look for a motion to approve the $200 to USD 287 today.
So move.
Motion and a second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know if we can leave some brochures if there's any Franklin County veterans that would like to call the school and sign up for that program.
Thank you.
Okay, our third one is consider approving a request from the Wellsville American Legion to contribute $200 towards the 2016 Veterans Day celebration.
Yes, sir. Commander Eggleston of Wellsville, Post 194, and we usually have our Veterans Day program at the Wellsville High School, and then afterwards, we invite all our veterans that are attending there to come down to the post, and we serve them dinner there. And we usually serve somewhere between 50 and 60 veterans and their family lunch, so we'd just like to ask you if we could get a $200 donation to help us serve their lunch.
Happy to make that motion to approve the request for the Wellsville American Legion, $200.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, Janet?
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for your time.
I want to sign up for public comment. Okay, it takes us to the consent agenda. Items that need considering and approved today on the consent agenda are the Franklin County Commission meeting minutes for October the 19th, 2016. There's no claim vouchers, there's no tax change orders. Also need to approve an emergency vehicle permit for Matthew Brandy.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as stated.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, takes us to the items of business. Our first item of business will be to receive a presentation from Prairie Paws Animal Shelter. Melissa.
That seems strange. Oh, yeah, got it. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for your time this morning. I'm excited to present to you what's been happening at Prairie Paws Animal Shelter this last quarter. I'll start off with some year-to-date stats. So far to this year, we've received 822 intakes. This compares to 861 for the total of 2015, so you can see that we're on target. In the last 60 days, we've had 226 intakes come through our doors, so it's definitely been a very busy last quarter. Franklin County makes up 16% of our total intakes year-to-date. We've had 613 adoptions. The same time period last year, we had 504, so we've seen a significant increase compared to 2015. We have 144 returned to owners compared to a timeframe of last year of about 133, so we're right on target on there. Our live release rate, with all of these increases that we've been able to have this year, we've still been able to maintain our 96% live release rate. And as you recall, in order to be no-kill shelter, you have to have a 90% or above, so we are right at the highest part of our target there. We've had 7,100 hours of volunteers for this year. This compares to a total of 2015 for about 6,200 hours. So we definitely, with our increase of our volunteer position, have seen the community step up and really come out and help us. This has really allowed us to go out in the community and do more outreach activities, which is a really important priority for our board strategically looking forward. With the increased volunteers, we've been able to do 24 outreach visits in June, 19 in July, 33 in August, and 35 in September. These are visits with communities and schools. This is Lake Mary, this is COF, this is Ottawa Retirement Village, this is OUD Stress Days. We're out in the community helping to educate and get our animals kind of out of the shelter as well. That would not be possible without our amazing volunteers. Our depositions, so you can see, we've had significant increases since June. We have seen, June this year compared to last year, we had a 130% increase. July, we had a 37%, August is a 30, and September, we're showing a 50% increase. So we've done a lot of analysis, why we've seen this increase in the last quarter. And some of the things that we contribute is our increased marketing. We're still out, you know, all these offsites and educational opportunities are getting us out there, as well as we revise our adoption process. You know, I went to the HSUS conference in May, and we came back with a lot of key factors to help us increase our adoptions and get out in the community more, as well as we have a volunteer intake coordinator position. So one of the things that we started seeing with our increased adoptions is we didn't have the animals lined up to come in the doors, and so we needed to address that. Our business model is that we have to have our shelter full at all times in order to support the size of the organization. And so, looking at it, we couldn't afford to go out and hire an intake position, and so we recruited a volunteer. So she is out there constantly, when we don't have intakes from Ottawa and Franklin County, looking for those highly adoptable animals, diversifying our shelter animals, which has helped us see a significant increase in adoptions. We can't get them out if we don't have them in, and so that has been a significant impact in our organization for this year. Here, you'll see our dog intakes. Ottawa ACO makes up about 30% of our dog intakes. Franklin County's about 16% of that, with Ottawa rounding it up about 15%. So that's just Ottawa citizens that are not coming in through animal control. Our cat intake, you'll see Ottawa makes up about 52% of that, with Franklin County making up the remainder 20%. You'll see there's a lot of different variety that you've seen in previous years. This goes back to our volunteer coordinator intake out there searching for animals. Our trap neuter return program, we have seen successful efforts in Ottawa. We are fortunate enough to get a truck that you'll see up there donated to help us with these efforts. What we are running across with all our educational opportunities that we had and the TNR program, we were, had one vehicle, we were running out of options to be able to go out and trap. We have successfully trapped an auto. There's still a lot more community cats out there, but we've kind of run out of leads. So what we've done is we've extended the program into Franklin County. We definitely want to take partnership with our K-State, so we've started hitting some of those farms that have the barn cats and starting to target those, so we're expanding our efforts there. To date, we have spayed 184 cats. We've neutered 196 for a total of 380 spay and neuters. This has resulted in preventing 1,104 kittens from being born in our community. So we want to definitely continue this program. We're looking at expanding it again out into those rural communities and making sure that we're helping with the cat overpopulation in our community. Overall, we've had a successful third quarter despite some challenges on the intake side of things. We're excited to finish 2016 out strong. We definitely appreciate the county's support and could not do what we do without the generosity of the donations and just the partnerships. We're looking to expand that in 2017 and have some ideas that will be coming to you with how we make a bigger impact in the county as well as the city, and I would just like to open it up this time if you have any questions.
Well, on the dog intake, I'm just curious, even though it's not a large number, but it's like Missouri, Shawnee County, Harvey County, it seems like it's a long ways that they're passing a lot of animal shelters to come to.
So, yes, so part of this is our outreach. So, is when we don't have Ottawa or Franklin County citizens with animals and we have an empty shelter, we have to go out and search for animals. So we have our volunteer intake coordinator who is going out, reaching out to smaller shelters that may be kill shelters, that we can pull from in order to keep, and they're mostly highly adoptables. They're the little, small dogs that we know that are not going to be in our shelter past a 15-day length of stay. So they're helping to subsidize our community animals.
So they're not bringing them to us, we're going out, basically, and giving?
Yes, we're going out and searching for them. They are not typically bringing them and just calling us and saying...
As you said, because of full shelters, how your business model is...
Exactly, I have to...
Animals out creates revenue and...
Yep.
Yeah. And you also form relationships, I imagine, with other places where if we do have a large influx of animals, you'd be able to send them somewhere.
Yes, and that's what we're doing right now. For example, we are overrun with pit bulls all of a sudden. Through animal control, bring us pit bulls and just the state. So with our breed-specific legislation, it's very difficult for us. So we've got about six right now that we're going to transfer to another shelter, and so we are forming partnerships. And when we get to a length of stay, about 45 days at our shelter, we're reaching out to other shelters. Let's get them into a different demographic, and maybe they'll get adopted faster, and it's helping our length of stay.
Well, I definitely want to commend you on your numbers on your adoptions. If it wasn't that many years ago, that number would have been unheard of in this area.
I appreciate it, thank you.
On your volunteer hours, do you see an increase more of the number of volunteers or more in the number of hours from your volunteers?
Right now, we're seeing an increase in number of volunteer hours, not so many more volunteers, but I think our volunteer coordinator has been able to engage them. We have also revamped our volunteer program. We have a mentor program, and we have a cat 101, a dog 101, and so there are stages of our volunteer program that allow you to kind of have more, you can do dog tours and things at the shelter. And so I think that one-on-one interaction has really engaged people and have them come back reoccurring.
To the banquet, there's the, definitely a strong and healthy culture around your organization, and I think you need to foster that.
Well, thank you, and thank you for coming to that. I definitely appreciate you being there. Anything else?
About how many dog tags do you sell a year?
Um, right now, our revenue's about 9,100 for the year. We budgeted about 10,000, so depending on, you know, it's seven to $10 a tag there. So, you know, we're looking to increase that. We're having conversations right now, and how do we get that marketing out more to the community about dog tags? A lot of times, we're seeing them come in after they ran away, and then we're getting the dog tags before they're returned. So we're trying to get on the front side of that, and we're going to start having conversations with the city of Ottawa on how do we get the word out more about the dog tags.
If you get a dog tag and an implant, what would that cost you?
We just finished up a microchip special of $10, but typically, our microchips are $15. Your dog tag, if it's during January to February 14th, during that timeframe, for an unaltered is about $8. There's a $20 late fee if you get it done throughout there, so you're looking at about $28 for that. What we've... been there three days, it's typically $10 a day to board the animal to take care of it. Instead of doing that, we're waiving that, and if they microchip their animal, there's no boarding. So we're trying to really increase the microchips to help those return to owners. Because typically, if your dog gets out once, it's probably going to come back to our shelter two or three times sometime without the, through the lifespan of that pet. All right. Thank you so much.
We'll thank you and keep up the good work.
Thanks.
Next item of business, consider approval to fill a treasurer vacancy on the Greenwood Township Board. Janet?
So I recently received a resignation letter from Tim Mathias. As you know, he was recently promoted at the fire department to chief, and so he doesn't really feel like he has the time to input in this position anymore. The treasurer generally handles the majority of the building things, operations that go on. He handles all the keys and, you know, renting out the building that they have out there at Greenwood Township. So he didn't feel like he could do that anymore, so he notified me. And he also had a discussion with Nancy Parkin, who sent me this letter that you have before you, saying that she was interested in serving in that position. I had Joy publish in the newspaper, as we always do, notifying the public that this position was open, and we did not have any other interested parties. So, would be my recommendation to appoint Nancy Parkin to fill the remainder of the term for the Greenwood Township Treasurer.
I love that everything was published to the public, so if there's no more discussion on this, I would look for a motion to approve Nancy Parkin to fill the remainder of that term for the treasury position at Greenwood Township. No move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
All right. Next item will be considered to approve the sale of temporary notes, Series 2016. Janet?
So, we have David Artiberry, Tyler, I just flanked your last name, I'm very sorry. I'm Kutek Rock, here to discuss the temporary notes. You have all of the bid sheets in front of me that David provided me, so I'll just let them come up and discuss that with you.
Good morning. Yeah, I think you should have that report in front of you that's got the summary of the bids. But basically, in front of you today, you have a resolution that will authorize the issuance of temporary notes to fund some of the design costs for the Rock Creek Industrial Park. I think basically, the proceeds from this will be used to pay these costs so that the county doesn't have to spend your reserves to pay the issuance costs. Maintaining high levels of reserves is something that bond rating agencies and investors see is very important. And I wouldn't want you to drain your reserves while doing this project and put yourself in a position then when you go to sell long-term bonds of having investors and rating agencies ask you why your reserves are low. So, the other thing hopefully this note will allow you to do is to have enough funds to get far enough into the project that you have a very good handle on what the total project cost will be before you actually issue the long-term bonds for the project. And I think we had previously talked about that being sometime this coming spring. Obviously, plans can change, but that's, I think, what we've been looking at previously. We ended up taking bids for these temporary notes this Monday. Bids were due up until noon, and we got three good responses. One from Kansas State Bank here locally, as well as a bid from Commerce Bank and UMB Bank out of Kansas City. The best bid, the firm that offered to purchase the interest rate, or purchase the notes from you at the lowest interest rate was submitted by UMB Bank. And you can see there, their net, average net interest rate was 1.3759%. UMB has probably more experience than any of the other firms in doing this kind of issue. They've got, they do a really good job in placing these notes, and obviously, that's reflected by their very aggressive interest rate, too. So, their bid has been incorporated into the resolution I mentioned earlier, and I'll just kind of turn it over to Tyler here. Unless you have any questions about the process, I'll turn it over to Tyler to explain what all is in the resolution and what would need to be occurring today.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. As Janet and Dave mentioned, you have a resolution for your consideration this morning that authorizes the county to issue these notes. And what that really means is that it authorizes the chairman and the county clerk to sign various closing documents, execute the notes themselves, and then deliver those to UMB. And it, the resolution sort of prescribes the form and the details and the terms of the notes, and that's essentially it. But I'm happy to answer any questions about the process. The only item I would add is that we're looking at closing on November 10th, so that's when the notes would actually be delivered to UMB, the purchaser, and that's when the county would receive the $995,000, no proceeds.
Derek, have you had an opportunity to go over these, look over these bids?
I've looked at them. I will tell you, and she's been fantastic, but Janet has largely been handling this for me. I've given him a review for any legal concerns, but certainly, I mean, for this purpose, he is our counsel on this. I'm not a bond attorney, so am I very comfortable with it? Absolutely.
Right. My only thing was, there's no real reason to table this to give you time to look over them, anything correct?
No, I'm, Janet and I have had ample discussions on it. I'm very comfortable with where this is.
Well, the, we all know that we try to do businesses locally as much as we can. There is somewhat of a difference between the UMB Bank and local.
If I understand it correctly, there's, the total cost is what we're looking at, the $1,005,000, the $1,008,000, and the $1,016,000 on the costs with the interest rate.
I'm sorry, the $1,005,000, $1,008,000, and $1,000,000?
Yeah.
Well, the difference between the rates, you know, the UMB bid is about 1.37%, and the bid from Commerce is 1.48, and Kansas State Bank is about 1.99%. The difference in those is, between the UMB and Commerce Bank is, oh, about $1,200 in interest cost, and between UMB and Kansas State Bank is about, oh, $7,000 in interest in total difference cost to the county.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else?
And we are talking about one year, one year on these notes, right? So that's, that's a difference in cost in one year, so...
Right. And the notes are callable early, so if the project is ready to go and you have a good cost estimate next spring, what would happen is long-term bonds would be issued to fund the total project cost, plus pay these notes back, and we can redeem the notes early.
But as we discussed previously, if we need to extend these notes, then we would be able to do that also. If the project isn't as far along as we thought, and we need to extend them, then we could do that.
You can roll them over, yeah.
And I'm quite sure you've had numerous dealings with UMB Bank.
Yes, yeah, they do a very good job.
$10,000 to borrow $1,000 for years, pretty, pretty fair. Pretty good deal for us.
I guess if there's no more discussion, I would look for a motion to accept the low bid for the sale of the temporary notes. No move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
We will sign those documents right after this meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, item number four, discuss proposals received regarding an organizational assessment of Franklin County, Kansas.
You guys will recall, back on August 8th, the prior administrator came to you and a discussion was had regarding the potential need for an organizational assessment of Franklin County's operations. And by that, we were talking about just hiring a consultant to come in and do what's called a workflow analysis of our entire operation to see if we are operating as efficiently as possible. If we're staffed appropriately. It appears as if we budgeted $45,000 for that, and I guess, let me back up. At the time, I was not involved in this project, but it's my understanding that these RFPs were sent to four organizations. And I don't know how the four were selected, or why only four were selected, and maybe there are only four in the area that do it, I don't know. But of those four, we got two responses back. Now, it appears that we budgeted $45,000 for this assessment, and looking at the two proposals we received, one is for $84,500, and the other is for $99,800. So obviously, we have not budgeted the appropriate amount for this. I've reviewed the studies. I mean, feel free to ask me whatever questions you feel.
Class budget session, it was something that we put on our radars, maybe being interested in. I think there's some value to the county in doing it, and for us, I think the general consensus was, maybe it was about $45,000. It can't get done for that. I'm not sure right now is the best time anyways, and, you know, it's free to ask. And, I mean, for me, I just, I don't think it's the best time, and it's probably not worth that to us right now.
I agree. My opinion back when we talked about this was, to me, it was a waste of a lot of money at $45,000. Now it's outrageous at this price. I don't see that that would benefit us. I think we can look at some of the issues that we have ourselves for a lot less money than what we're talking about here.
Well, and I, that, I completely agree with that. Like I, as counselor, I've worked with pretty much all of our departments, and I know they work hard. And I would like some time, just in this interim role, to continue to, like, I just, I don't think this study is needed. I think just working with our department heads, working cohesively as a team, we might be able to find some efficiencies. But in terms of paying all this money to bring someone in, I just, I personally, while in the abstract, I can understand it being a good idea for this organization at this time, I just don't think that it is.
I agree. And I think a study like this would give us some good information. Anytime you have a third person, a new set of eyes come into an organization and say, you know, this is how your peers are doing it, did you think about this? I just don't think there's that much value in it. Not, it's not commensurate with that dollar amount, so...
I agree.
Not right for us, not right now, in my opinion.
And I think back to, we at one time in the past was discussing whether to cut back one maintainer or stay where we were at. And we brought in an outside person to do a study on our roads and our hours and everything on our maintainers, to whether we needed to cut back or stay where we were at. And he came to us with his findings and gave us several ideas that he thought would help us, and I don't think we implemented anything that he done. So basically, we paid for the study, and we got the same amount of maintainers, and we've done nothing else with it. So I think that in order to pay this kind of money to do one, you got to be ready to implement what they come back with, and I'm not sure that will benefit us at this time, like Colton was saying, so...
I concur. I don't think it's necessary.
When we hire another administrator, then will that person may have some inside advantage to knowing certain experiences and have a very good background of what needs to be checked or what not needs to be checked. I certainly would not be in favor of doing a study at that cost.
Well, in that case, there's nothing needed. This just, I mean, we don't respond to these, or we'll respond, letting them know we've elected not to do it at this time, but no motion is needed.
We'll just table this for, at this time?
Yeah.
No action?
Okay. Takes us to staff reports.
Okay. Well, as you know, Rick, you and I and Randy last night went to the FCDC annual meeting, and they, I thought that was very nice. I thought they did a real nice job with it, and perhaps you two will share your impressions of that, but I think they do a good job over there. Other than that, I don't have a lot for you all to staff report at this time, so...
Okay. Steven?
Chair?
Jim? Well, this is going good. I know you're asking, Jim, I know I have something.
I just want to let you guys know, we've had quite a few calls about tax statements. We were hoping to go to tax statement today, but we're still waiting on other counties. So I have heard from Osage County, and they said that they think maybe tomorrow they might have their values, their waiting on, their, I mean, their levies, they're waiting on another county also to get that levy for me. So we are gonna, we're ready to go to tax statement whenever we get our other information from our other counties. And just to let you know that we've had close to 500 early voters already, so early voter turnout has been really good.
Okay. Takes us to Commissioner Comments and Board Reports. Want to start, Roy?
Yeah, I haven't been anywhere.
Okay, that was quick.
I guess Lyon County, just something to share, had their tax sale last night, had more than 80 parcels. They held it in the evening, which is kind of different. Started at 6:00, but I guess they had quite a few back years, so I imagine that was to accommodate the public. I'd be interested in how that went. If you can get through 10 an hour, that's eight hours. So I don't know how quick they were able to auction through the parcels, but...
Hey, and when we've done those, they go pretty fast, it seems like. I mean, I think we do a lot more than, say, eight an hour, but I guess...
Yeah, but I mean, if it's 16, it's four hours, but sure.
Yeah, on how, how many bidders there are and how aggressive it gets.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll look into that.
That's it for me.
Randy? No, sir? Okay, as Derek said, Commissioner Renaud and I, Derek attended the FCDC meeting last night, and I thought it was very good. Very, very good meal that was put on, and they're, like you said, they're doing a lot of work over there and making an effort to get things done for us. Last Wednesday, I think Derek and, Ms. Dunn and I attended the joint luncheon with USD 290 and the city, and as we do once a month. That's the only two things I've been to since our last meeting. The only other thing I have to add is, tomorrow morning at the Layton Center, there is a program, I think it starts at 8:00, is that right? Do you know? Is anybody planning?
It's 9:00. I don't know. They're doing it at both sites. They're doing it at Wellsville and, or Ottawa and Payola both.
The morning at, morning at Ottawa and noon at Payola. Anybody here attending that in the morning?
I'll be able to.
I think I can go to it, I'll try to make that. And then tomorrow, there is domestic violence lunch, and put on by the city.
I'll be there. She emailed, needed somebody from the county to be there. I'll go, yeah.
Okay, just make sure we have someone at both those events, so if no one has anything else, I guess I would look for a motion to adjourn. No move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, per adjourn.